Okay, start with the pledge. This afternoon, we have an honorary person here to do the pledge for us. Girl reporter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll call please.
Trusty Tom Lee.
Here.
Trusty Patrick.
Here.
Trusty Tom Lee.
Here.
Trusty Garrett.
Yep.
Garrett Martin.
Garrett. Motion to approve the minutes made.
Aye.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, one more deal.
First, that's fine.
Alright. Any discussion on these?
No.
If there's no discussion, take a vote. All those who think are approved, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The motion to approve, special board meeting made 22nd. It was, uh, Trusty Tom Lee, Trusty, no, she was here. Trusty Garrett?
Yeah, we have three of them.
Okay.
Water.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these?
You're after the base paper.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those who think are approved, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Special board meeting made 25th. The motion to approve.
Aye.
Second?
Second.
Okay, this is for, uh, David tonight's sake. For, uh, for service to be looking, reimbursed from the project for.
Gas.
And gas. Standing at your gas sign on County Street. And you still got, you still got more over that one line.
Uh, maybe today, and, uh, I gotta go. It's not 1,200 feet long, but I may dig it Wednesday.
Okay.
Well, it's a long one, I should dig it all day.
Oh, yes, thank you.
So, it's only gonna be three feet, and they'll run the line?
They're gonna dig it, then if it lands, go back for it.
Okay. Alright. Do we have a?
Yes.
You have a second?
Yes.
All those who think are.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Aye.
Presentation of additions, communications notices, general question period for our, for members of the community. Welcome, girl scouts. How are you tonight? Good. What do you got for the board?
You have something to tell us? So, they do have a small slideshow, we can, I can hold it if you want, uh, with some pictures that goes, uh, this is their first year as juniors, and they're looking at trying to do some work on the old island park as part of the bronze award. So, they can work on their bronze award for the next, it'll be another year, so it'll be until September around 2018, that they can continue to work on their project. They have to have so many hours in, they have to have special presentations. So, I would like to ask if it's okay if I record the girls presenting to you as part of their bronze award project?
Certainly.
Okay? Um, and then I can just hold this slideshow, show some historical pictures of the island, um, and then some pictures we took out there today to show some of the overgrowth issues and things that they would like to address. So, if they could give me a quote.
I need to be able to watch that documentary as well. It's so dope. Man, this scope, I'm sorry. It's just so green.
Yeah, would you see this? Yeah, I can see that. It doesn't move, just, okay. Now, if anything, I'm just, I'm just.
Hi, I'm Haley, mayor of the county of Florida. We are here representing your 42nd district, and we'd like to talk about our bronze award. For our girl scout bronze award, we would like to improve the condition of the village island, and try to restore it back to a useful way as a property. We would like to start working on the project starting this year. Our project would possibly take until the end of September, October, 2018. Uh, we would like to add the following tax, such as, moving trash, old buildings, remnants, and, and offices, into a new, dead trees, plants, and overgrown bushes. Trim healthy trees and plants, trim the long grass and ferns and plants, and quayb, and seeds. It's the whole picture that can be used there, like a great bird feeder, or, uh, maybe we will have to, to invite anyone wanting to leave the island, we would like to also create a new growing dirt space that we can do damage to it too, and, uh. We would like to start this project by investing those girls' parents, friends, the new community member, for anyone else that would like to help those, sometime, having our expertise and labor. As girls living in this community, we think this project would be beneficial for the community, because it would improve our livelihood, provide another area for residents to use. This project also, uh, also would help to bring back part of their heritage stream. We would like to continue with this as a virtual experience, and we hope to enjoy the space and community.
It's a pretty ambitious project. I'm glad that you've decided to put this stuff in the margin. If you're a girl scout, you can add some kinds of things. Remember the old days, your stories of the dying of the, you know, the little bridge, people having concerts out there, picnics and dancing, all kinds of stuff up there. Really great if you could bring back just a little piece of that. I think that's where you go, I think that's what you're looking for, is just bringing back a little piece of that history. It'd be really great, you know, to be able to go out there, picnic and fire, whatever, you know, when you need it. Uh, the island is a bit different than it was 30 years ago, or 40 years ago, I mean, it's overgrown, and, uh, you know, it hasn't had much attention paid to it, but I think this fellow's board would be more than happy to approve anything that you would like to do down there. I'm sure Mr. Gallagher would be very good, lend a hand wherever he can, if he has any time, I feel with him. Just adding another, adding another layer there, Mike, probably. But I, I think that's a, I think it's an excellent idea. I think it's wonderful. Anything that we can do to help you out, to make this a reality, I think this fellow's board can hold a lot of hope.
That's fantastic.
Very impressive.
I think it's awesome. I think you should organize a community, several community days, to get all of us together to volunteer, pick some days, and get it out on all the, um, Facebook and all that good stuff that most people look at, but not me. And, um, we can, you'll have a lot of people who support that. I know the community used to love that island, and if you can find a way to ferry, because I will not walk in that river across the way, but I know a lot of people are, community would be happy to help you with that. So, you'd be surprised at the number of people that will turn out and solicit them.
Sometimes what it takes is a much more impressive person to, to plant these ideas and to get things moving forward. We wouldn't have a community garden while we made it, but the start of that community garden was a high school student, and I asked if we could do that for the community. And she was, she was, I think, a sophomore, I think, in high school at the time, and she really, uh, she really was the start of that whole community garden, which I think has been very successful. So, this is a great idea. This is something that, you know, I'm glad that you're willing to take it on, and it's Trusty Garrett mentioned it. You'd be surprised how much help we can get, especially from the board, asking for help. You'd be surprised how many people show up with their, with their, uh, their, you know, loves, all that good stuff. That's great.
It's an awesome endeavor. I'm, I'm proud to see kids, um, concerned about the community and wanting to do it for their community. I commend you wholeheartedly, because you don't see a lot of that these days, so it's nice to see.
It's very impressive to see.
Are you able to do any fundraising towards this?
We can. Um, the girls actually just did their very first fundraiser this weekend, they did a fundraiser yard, so they helped, for their trip to Boston coming in, and obviously it did very well. Um, they did enjoy doing the fundraiser, and they're excited to do more. They were coming up with some plans, um, and we actually took everybody over on our, I'm sure, probably most of you have seen our dock that we put in the water, we slide. So, we kinda got on that with a couple metal poles, and just, she made everybody cross, and she says, "How would everyone get across, Mom?" And I said, "We could just take the slide off our dock, and we could maybe put a pulley across from tree to tree, and people could, sure, leave that to go right across, lawnmowers, shovels, whatever." Don't get them started with the zip line.
Are you able to do a GoFundMe page or something like that?
Yes.
Did you have to try and reach out to Woodman? He had that, um, the red hat, Woodman.
You guys are our first stop? Because we wanted to make sure it was something that the village would approve, the girls even go forward with.
I could always send out an email to Tim Dial with your information, um, that you're looking to sue this, and I know they have, it's called the Red Hat. It's a, it's a donation, um, thing that they do, or a red basket.
You're gonna need some help, because I'm sure you've thought of this, trying to get rid of it, build it up, and, whatever, some new construction works here.
Right. And then, you know, we thought about how can everyone get there. Obviously, we can't put up a bridge that they used to have before, because they actually could just destroy it. But the girls thought, a floating dock system, and we could just pull it up, maybe, on the edge of the next pond, just to pull it out, you know, and store it, or even slide it down the river, that's what we get ours out here. Park it at the end of the island, or, uh, River Street or something, just for the winter, so it's not destroyed, it's maintenance every year, putting it in and taking it out, which I'm sure the troops would be happy to do.
We'd have to see on that too, because I know, uh, sometimes there's problems with blocking the waterway, so we need to make sure that's doable.
With D C.
Yeah, because sometimes you can't blossom navigable water. I know a lot of people have issues with that, maybe because you go on both sides, it's not an issue, but we have to find out before, to make sure, because I know navigable waterway had been, people go, somebody had a dock from one property to another property on the other side, and couldn't, couldn't have to go to bridge, couldn't put it in, because somebody took it. And I have to find out, and see if it's the only thing, make sure there's no rules placed. Maybe it wouldn't be an issue, because there's another way around, I don't know, but if we're like, I would definitely make sure before we say no.
Or possibly.
Just to let it.
Too shallow.
Maybe right, maybe right now, but.
Right now, they're.
Later on, you'll wear sneakers.
Yeah, well, yeah, I walked over there last year.
Right, because normally about this time of the year, the boats stop coming through. At least, they just, they can't get up there, it's just too shallow. And so.
But that's down the road, I mean, we can.
Right.
You're right, the D C's gonna have to.
You just have to make sure that, it's where, you know, like, somebody makes something, put it in, and they say you can't.
Right.
Better make sure now.
I would place that if you're, if you're able to, it's hard to slow, you just, using a man, or you should go and slow, like, uh, through the street, or, or, slow, you can, uh, you can.
Do they consider the island to be the banks? If they've cut down trees, or doing any kind of cleanup, they're able to get D C as well.
If it's below, it has to be below the median high water mark, you can stay above that. Uh, and like, if a tree is in the river, if it falls, you can take it out right away, but if it's getting embedded into the, to the water, you cannot control that one. But everything up and on, in, you know, on the island should be safe to remove, it's the things that are right near the edge of the lake, working, and, and so on and so forth.
Do you want to talk about the D C?
For my house.
I'm sure they could, uh, walk through the process.
Right, they were very, very nice, they're calm, so.
They do have their own processes.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Well, I would entertain the motion, that the board supports us a little.
Awesome.
Yeah? Uh, you want to come up with your wording?
With the wording, uh, the board supports the, um, cleanup efforts by the girl scouts and, on the island property, and, uh, I'm gonna put it up.
You can go over there. We also, we think goodbye. And this is success. That's what we're all about, actually. Okay, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolutions carries. Thank you, ladies.
It would be really nice too, if, maybe every two months, you guys, you know, take.
Come back and visit us.
Yes, they like helping. Yes, we do.
And what we can do as well.
That's alright. Good luck, girls. Fantastic presentation. Thank you, very, very good.
Thanks to the leaders, too.
Then I'll have to tone down my rhetoric a little bit.
No door prizes tonight?
No door prizes tonight. Blood pressure medicine, maybe. Greetings and welcome to, uh, your June board meeting. It appears that summer has finally arrived, and plans are underway for a busy season of village events. The longboats have arrived, we'll soon start using them at the village park a couple nights a week, as well as using them as part of our multiple activities for local children this summer. As we have mentioned at past board meetings, there are numerous activities offered at our two villages, as well as venues scheduled at the town. These offerings are available to all children living in the town of Champlain. There are many village activities still in the planning stage for this summer. Our annual village fest scheduled for August 12th, music in the park, children's activities like Fun Run, you had one last night, buddy. Reading activities, playground offerings, and many others will be available to our residents and visitors. The shared water project is slowly coming to an end, with the anticipated, say goodbye to the construction equipment date of July 31st. We realize this has been a long experience, and we would like to thank you again for your patience and understanding, the softer water, the increased water pressure in areas that in the past were deficient, and the hope that this will improve the overall quality and quantity of water for both the village and the town. I encourage everyone affected by this project, both village and town, to be very vigilant as the restoration work continues in areas disturbed by the construction. The construction company is under contract to restore each and every property that has been affected by this project. Lawns are to be topsoiled and seeded, sidewalks repaired and replaced, or replaced. Trees are to be taken care of or replaced if damaged, including the tree's root system, and any other damages that are to be repaired and/or replaced. If you, as a property owner, are not happy regarding the restoration process, you should let your village and town officials know, so that we can pass this information on to the inspectors, who will in turn, deal with the construction company, to make your concerns heard and remedied to your satisfaction. After the company pulls out of the village and/or town, the restoration process will end, and it will be up to the homeowner to address any further needs. Please, be aware that the village will do everything it can to ensure these matters are taken care of, but we are asking for your help in this matter regarding the project completion. We have all had to endure the ups and downs of this project, and now, as the end nears, it is important that we get the benefits and satisfaction that we will all be paying for in the future. Great? Thank you for the privilege of your time. We started here last month, here this month.
Um, okay, um.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was happy.
I didn't mean to jump ahead of you, Mike, go ahead.
Well, you've got my report, I mean, this time of year, grass is a big issue. I've talked to a lot of people, a lot of banks or, uh, financial institution owns properties, and I'm getting response from them, so I kinda think that the grass issue, for the most part, is pretty good. There's still a couple places that I've been told are gonna cut, and haven't done it yet, so, working on that, other than that, a few junk issues, that's about it.
Have you been up Oak Street?
Yeah.
Because we've got a couple properties up there that we will need money. It's all right next to Floyd and Shirley, but Percy, they're gone, I don't know if the bank owns that now.
Oh, yeah, a little red house, yeah.
Yes, um, I noticed Floyd making passes, a little each day to try and hack it down, he's gotten the.
No, I did notice it, I wrote it down, and I forgot about that one, yeah, I did see that one.
Yeah.
Because the guy with all stones, I'm gonna send a letter to him, but I've been busy with the grass, so I didn't get to him. But, I kinda thought I got a pretty good response this time around, as far as the grass goes, because for a while, I was, wasn't very optimistic, but.
It was good.
And you did get some good news last week, my folks, guys, from, uh, from our attorneys.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for, yeah, we can talk about that.
Well, the response that we got from our attorney dealing with the foul case.
Foul case A or B?
Uh, foul.
Okay.
He was in contact with the attorney general, and the attorney general felt that this was not going to be a pursueable matter, and that we, as a village board and as the zoning, uh, this would not be something that we could draw out and run in court over this pertinent law.
No, you can't.
And, uh, he felt that there was not a significant case, so that we could move forward with writing correspondence to the person, and requesting that the procedures take place as they were first transcribed. And, uh, follow the village laws, village code, that these, uh, that the birds. But we'll have to see where that goes, as it goes in the next, uh, he was, uh, Mr. Man was pretty confident that this is, but he has been along, uh, on a fair, and, and, to find the, some sort of conversion, but we'd be happy to look at it. No? No? Any questions for Mike, the judge?
I just have, I'm just curious about where, that foul might go.
It has to go outside the village.
Has to be outside, and there has been an offer made.
Okay.
As far as I know, it still stands, but this was much above, but there was.
There's a few offers, I know.
To move them from point A to point B, outside the village.
Every time I stand in the backyard, I look up at that reason, I laugh about how that scared me that night. Um, no, I just, I was curious as to what, um, in Hummer, yes, yeah, it's.
A bunch of volunteers.
I was just curious.
Okay, any further, any questions for Mike, the judge? Can we move on to the new board session, now that I messed the whole order up here? Can you also?
Yes, um, I wanted to say, uh, you know, living, living near where the walking trail was, walking, walking trail is going in, I cannot believe how quickly that project has gone through the village of Champlain, and how neat and how, how nice it looks, and hopefully, people are gonna be able to start enjoying that soon. Um, the barrels, I know the barrels will screw up, I guess, they probably just don't want people using it yet, uh, but it looks really, really nice, and, um, hopefully, later in the summer, we're gonna see people wanting that.
It's supposed to be good, and, and, it's, 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 that's why you're, they still have a, like, you know.
Oh, okay, that's probably why the barrels are up.
Yeah, because of why you're dropped out, and, uh, so.
It is progressing easy.
It is, it is.
It started in this, uh, drive, some places down further, just too wet, so, it just happened just before the bazaar, and.
You're on the, you're on.
Yeah, and, uh, we were in Pocat, over, overton, and, and, across, okay.
Did we start at the bridge, or did we start to do that?
No, I don't think, so, we just went overton the other day, and, and, it was just, okay. Obviously, they didn't quite, they weren't sure. But, but, actually, some of the crew from, a lot of planes, from, uh, you imagine being locked, and, and, uh, it's all, uh, uh.
Isn't that nice to see a construction manager move forward in an orderly, productive manner?
Day and night.
Sorry, everything in the front.
Between contractors, you believe me?
Sorry, can I?
No, no, that's, you're only saying what I was thinking, um.
Do you know, does anyone know with this trail, um, the upkeep and all of that that's gonna be, and is there going to be lighting on the parts that kind of go behind the warehouse, through the field, out of sight of everyone?
Lord.
I'm really kinda concerned about one section, very concerned.
Are there, are there lights on Pocat?
So, they're gonna cut across Pocat, and then it jogs behind the warehouse, and then up behind Cherry Street, behind all of that, and then cuts down. So, you got a section that has no eyes on other than farm animals up there.
And, well, I would.
It worries me, that section really, really worries me. So, I was curious if there's any oversight, is the trail's gonna be cleared in the winter, who's gonna be responsible to upkeep, what happens if we have a situation like on Pocat once it starts, I would just, not to be a dead. Because it is lovely, and it's gonna be great, but there's a couple sections that worry me.
The main thing, the ones, the, the pathways that are in the, the street, the sun off.
And we'll have to, from here to Pocat, and, and, yeah.
And then, uh, parts of it, uh, I'm not sure what plans, as far as I know, I think I heard mentioned that there would be, like, snowy over.
Seasonal trail.
Yeah.
Using the cross country skiing.
Yeah, cross country skiing.
So, doing, and stuff like that.
During daylight hours.
Four-wheeling.
As long as the.
Sure, no, you're closer to that process.
No, no, but, none of that's a lot, right?
You'll see, they're cutting it around there now. Uh, it's supposed to be. Yeah, I think.
Checks it out.
I, I understand.
But, you know, there are trails across the country, and, and, some, there are areas of. I know, I get that, but, I, I understand.
There's, from our section here, it's, but there are others that are also, that are, you know, you know, far behind the school, that crosses over the edge of the field, you know, so.
But, but, recognition, you know, unfortunately, yeah, but there's no plans for that, but, um, great.
Trusty Tom Lee, what do you think?
I, I, oh, I, one other thing, uh, someone stopped at our house the other day, and, um, not village related, but they wanted to compliment, um, the village crew, and how on top of things that they are, and how nice the village is going to be when the water project is done. And I said, "I will, I will pass that along at our meeting," so, this one particular person was very, very happy, uh, with, with, you know, how things were progressing, and how beautiful it will be when it's all done, so, I wanted to pass that along, and it was very heartfelt.
Well, the mayor's report mentions several events.
What are you still looking at?
That's okay, we can shorten my toes, if you can shorten my report here. We did have a fantastic turnout for last night's fundraiser, the first of, of six, the amazing Champlain jam, uh, we had at least 25 kids, but we probably had 70 people.
not village-related, but they wanted to compliment, um, the village crew, and how on top of things that they are, and how nice the village is going to be when the water project is done. And I said, I will pass that along at our meeting, so. This one particular person was very, very happy, uh, with, with, you know, how things were progressing, and how beautiful it will be when it's all done, so, I wanted to pass that along, and it was very heartfelt. Well, the mayor's report mentions several events.
What are you still looking at?
That's okay, we can separate my toes, if you can shorten my report here. We did have a fantastic turnout for last Saturday's fundraiser, the first of, uh, six, the amazing Champlain jam. Uh, we had at least twenty-five kids, we probably had seventy people feel a little heart, between babies and parents and kids and grandparents, and people on chairs, and they sat, visited, it was really, really, really fun. Um, so it's every other Sunday, uh, the next one will be on the, uh, yeah, okay. Okay, oh, um, the longest day of play is June twenty-third, one to three-thirty at the playground, and we'll take the longboats out. So, if you both want to come, please do, should be all fun. Um, as the mayor said, the boats have, well, one boat arrived, and the other one is coming tomorrow afternoon, to save maybe some-
Oh, sorry, we do.
You won't be here? Oh, that's all right.
Yeah, we need room trips.
The committee, what do you have there besides me?
The driver there, I hope someone's back there.
Yeah, just send somebody down, uh, cause he has to get around to the, so you don't have to go there.
Okay.
Alright, so the second one's arriving tomorrow, um, the first session that I've scheduled is this Wednesday at six P.M. Um, we've got about eight kids who signed up through the youth, our youth commission, so I've notified all of them, and they're gonna be open to the public, and they want to go, no, and they want to stay at six, it's fun. Great to get out on the river, and there's a lot of water in the bay, so that's good, I don't worry about the rocks. Um, there is another work session for our zoning changes, uh, scheduled for the twenty-second. Uh, probably at five, Monica will be coming, I think the committee together, any coordinators that want to join. Um, she'll explain some of the architectural recommendations, some of the building recommendations. Mike, if you can come, I don't know if typically for you or not, I'm not sure that would be-
Yeah, it should be with me, cause it's June twenty-second?
June twenty-second, probably at five. What's that? In his office. There are four music skit, uh, music events scheduled this summer, beginning in July, two in July and two in August. I can get the dates at this meeting, and then, I think I mentioned last week, there's story hour in July, and the Friday, and Farmer's Market will start in July.
Hey, um, just wondering, I just wanted to work a speed, we, uh, Janet, the mayor and I met at A M F, A M F, they asked me here, uh, David and Paul, in regards to the project, or, or this whole governance. Uh, they called it programming, uh, up in session, but it was basically going over the drawings in detail, and giving them feedback on what we were going to do, and what we would do, or new change, et cetera. So the next step is going back, to go complete the drawings that I provided, the, the setup, and then we provide the drawing, um, suggested by them, uh, which may be, just get hacked, I'm not sure, maybe totally, but I don't know. It's gonna be their, their idea, and setting for those. So it's kind of a similar, um, kind of, uh, they were committed to. So, progressive, um, so, yeah, I see, uh, some of the drawings, yeah, they provided us a drawing, it was cool, uh, later. I understand, it's today, so, that'll be fun. The other thing I have, Jen, have you got copies made of them, in the sun?
Yes, I just made, of pictures, I just made one, so they can pass them. Oh yeah, yeah, we can talk to them.
Okay. But I, what I did was, based on Mary's suggestion, she said, we could put a thousand notes, so I went and took a bunch of shots of the world's sun. Um, I think it's time to get it restored, or it's too late, it definitely needs attention. And, um, and I think, my opinion, it's perfect time to do it, it's not being a period, it's not gonna be as possible. I think too late, much longer, it's gonna be a bad thing.
Scott, what do you think about it?
See the center of the letter, each one coming in.
Is that a lifelong agreement?
Oh, I have no idea. I was on the board then.
I don't know. I just mean that sign is up there forever. But I, I, I'm, I think that it should be assigned, you know, walk away people to the village established in and our emblem. And I think that's fine, in our village colors and not, not on what we need.
Yeah.
What about promoting Bill O'Neil Park, Bolt Launch, the things that we've done?
Well, that's, that's the thing about the signs, and that's exactly what the consultant's brought up, is no one knows to go downtown. No one knows you have a park down there.
A picnic area.
No one knows you have a playground.
Can we utilize these in the signs?
Right, why can't we?
Maybe you can, but let's make sure it's really attractive. Let's start with the one, the champagne on top. Let's start with a quote on that, and then maybe we can do some research on ways to, I don't know. A lot of gold leaders must wait, I could ask for those pictures.
Yes, I'm sure Scott's going to make a new sign from bottom, put those promotions to our park, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah, because no one knows to go downtown.
So, if you'd like to give me some examples of what I think would be appropriate for that model of horse, and I will also accept the quote for that.
Okay. So, good news, we got the grant for the horseshoe pits now, so it'll be another addition. So, another thing to chat with Mike and the staff when they can put it in. So, the grant will, or do we go and get volunteers to get it in? So, it pays for all the supplies, so it's built really professional pits, not just dumps of sand, but, you know, just to eat it. And they supply horseshoes, so we'll just have to figure out the logistics of signing them in and out by the weekend use, if we leave them down there, I need to see them before I'm away. I find the river. So, that's exciting. So, we need to move forward with that. Do you have a pleasure, whether we want to put this out to volunteers to do the plan of putting this in place, or? Adam, I'm the man who's not looking at it.
We could do it.
And we could volunteer.
Right.
I, I just think that, you know, since the village is trying so hard to be more community oriented, look at the beautiful turnout for the Arden celebration, and all the people that were there, the help with the trees, and including the Girl Scouts, absolutely, and we enjoyed their poetry so much at the meeting house. I think people, because the board is taking such an interest in making your village really nice, that people are really starting to take a lot more pride and want to get involved in stuff like that. So, I think if the guys could do the preliminary work and then a Saturday morning or something, that would be.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not that involved.
That's right.
You know, they gave a great layout on the internet of, you know, how to do it so, you know, your sand doesn't all wash away and it remains productive, so. Anyways, that's exciting. That's what we got.
Very exciting.
So, I also wanted to remind about the upcoming summer activities, and girls, maybe you can help promote this too. So, as all these things were sent home with kids at school to sign up for all the activities for the summer. We originally had hip hop dance scheduled for the end of July, but it had to be moved to June 24th, 26th, 7th, 8th, and 9th, 30th, 30th in the park. So, that is, all the activities we got were deliberately designed for family activities. So, first we wanted kids to sign up for it, and then whoever else wants to come, because all the activities are for all ages, which is nice. So, the exception to that is hip hop, they do have the younger ages of six to nine that will start at 1:00 P.M., and then at 2:00 P.M. is anyone 10 and older. So, at that point, family, moms, dads, brothers, sisters, whatever, I think it'd be really kind of fun to get it put down there, and that's going to be how great it could be. So, we need people to sign up for that. And then the next activity is the cardio fitness, which is going to be July 10 through 14th at 6:15 P.M. And they're going to hold two sessions, one in July and then one again in August. So, if you want to learn how to get some cardio into your, your fun time, they'll have that available. And then if you've always wanted to learn how to do Taekwondo, they're going to have two weeks of free lessons, which is awesome, and that's July 17th through 21st at 4:00 P.M. And then again in August, 14th to 18th. So, if you missed the first session, or if you absolutely loved it, we get a lot of the kids coming back to the second session, then they'll be teaching a bunch of new things. So, it's really catered to everybody within the community, obviously with the first priority going to the kids, that's what we named the power for the grant, so we really allot a lot of good guys there. So, we spread the word, they don't have to live within the village. So, if you've got friends outside of the village that you want to bring in, that maybe want to do this camp with you, they're welcome to do that. So, your fellow Girl Scouts do not have to be within the village or the town, because we're opening up pretty much. So, you need the forms, you can get them at the office here, right? Okay, so it's exciting, lots of fun things to do this summer, instead of, you know, counting the black flies and deer flies and mosquitoes. Good.
There's too many of them.
Too many of them.
Well, they should kill them off, the black flies anyway. These two days should have done it.
But for some benefit it is.
I, I have a question, we're talking about the park and, and family activities, what ever happened with the movies in the parks that we had for a couple of summers that were?
That was donated by a business. And there wasn't enough of a turnout or return on it for them to do, because it costs a couple thousand dollars to come in to do it, and there wasn't as big a benefit.
That's too bad.
It is. They got moved up to St. Mary's, I think, the last year, and that was, that was good. But then when I stopped doing the St. Mary's stuff. But the business isn't here anymore. It was working with Pop John owner, and he does all the company donuts too.
Well, I was gonna say, I thought it was through Duncan now.
He isn't doing that. He was doing them all over, and it just was so prohibitively expensive. So, each location about two grand to do, so he was donating all of that. I can reach back out, see if he's interested in restarting.
You know, people are really getting interested in the downtown, and it was, I know, I, when our grandson moved back to the area, that was the last summer that they did it, he wasn't having too much fun, his bits, it's still, well, he was having fun, not saying he's still watching the movie, but Grandma was thrilled. It, it was just nice, and there was a lot of people there. Now that people are really taking an interest in the park and the playground and stuff, that, you know, maybe, maybe that is the time to look at.
I'll give Ray a call, see. That's it for you.
Everyone has a copy of their main financials for expenses and revenues, which is also our annual year. And we end up with some very healthy fund balances, plus they also have money in the reserves to hopefully spend this year.
Put pressure on, buddy. Put pressure on.
It's an awful big price ticket sitting on top of the table here for us. I don't eat it. And Mike's sitting over there grinning, so I'm sure he'll have other options for us too.
I don't know if he's got enough energy to grin right now.
This being the first, first coordinating of our new fiscal year, I just want to compliment the board on the last year's budget, the budget year before that, we did quite well. We were well within our confines, and the rollover was healthy, but it, it just showed that we monitored the money spending very closely. Good job on the board as well as my colleagues. Others that like to spend their money. Okay, any motion to approve the warrant?
We have additional invoices to be added to the warrant. The additional invoices are $1,139.13 for a total warrant of $11,368.27.
What's, what's the increase in that?
That is our accounting program for taxes, the federal property taxes.
I make a motion that we accept the warrant with the addition of the other invoices for a total of $1,368.27.
One second.
Is there any comments on the court, just question? All right, you have a motion, or a first, or a second? Any more discussion? Can the real call, please?
Trusty Tromblin.
Aye.
Trusty Fettich.
Aye.
Trusty Tromblin.
Aye.
Trusty Barrett.
Aye.
Mayor Murray.
Aye. Report for the superintendent, please.
We're still holding along when you do the report, but the water project is still moving forward. We've got a little bit behind in water meters, with trying to oversee or babysit, whatever you want to say it, contractors. The water plant is coming along, but one of the walls is just about up, blocked, started the last couple of days here. Sewer line is mostly in. Either this week or next week, I'll be digging and putting the gas line in, nicely supposed to come down. Almost 1,200 feet of gas line buried. We still have, we still have about close to 70 water meters that I have to get in before I think to come online, ones needing pressure reducers, so two or three weeks of the same. This week we got two meters, and it just hasn't happened yet, so we're going to keep moving forward and do what we can do to, to guys event. Ross Dolls is here today, we went around and set all the pressure reducers for our new vaults, so they're all set for golf. As far as, as far as every water plant, the high left pumps are in and working, the new variable D F D, variable frequency drive pumps, the new well pumps came in, they're here, but it'll be a little bit before they're installed. As far as the rest of, I still, I'm still quite a ways behind, I have quite a bit of drainage as of right now, I still don't know what I'm going to do for streets or paving. Hopefully the next few weeks, month, as we get closer, we can, we can get that figured out, it's just so much on, right now, so much on the go with, with contractors that we're a little bit behind me involved, but we'll keep moving forward and do what we can to, you know, do what we can to move forward. Things will be, things will be wrapping up, so things will be, probably after we'll go do it ourselves, if we've been strung out for so long, it probably will happen, but we definitely are not black.
The men there is feeling.
Have a lack of, of work.
I know you're getting a little frustrated, Mike, about this whole project, but I just want to board to know how much respect I have for doing what you have, to keep this moving forward, and to, you know, I know you're, I know you're busy, I know you're starting out, and I know there's a lot of things that are on your plate and all that, but I don't think that we're seeing this frustrated this work today, and I just want you to know that we appreciate what you do.
It'll, it'll get better, it's just sometimes what you have to work with is not.
Get better with certain things.
Yeah, sometimes what you have to work with is not, you know, you better work with what you got, but sometimes there's just nothing there.
Yeah.
It makes it tough some days, you get a little discouraged, but you move forward, you move, we'll fix it, but it's just going to take a little longer, you know?
Well, Mike, the, the person that happened to stop at our house on Sunday, on a non-village related matter, had nothing but compliments for you and for the crew. Whenever he's had dealings with you, he just had nothing.
Nothing.
Praise.
We try to, the unfortunate part is a lot of the stuff that even right now that my phone rings for is not even, you know, it's not mine, and so it's not even a village, it's in town, but there's a contact, they've got my number, and that's, you know, so we do the best we can to try to, try to take care of the people. It's just hard to make promises when you better rely on somebody else to follow up on that promise, that's the hard, that's the hard part, which we all know, you know, they tell you what you want to hear, and relay it, but you got to be careful, because then if they don't follow through with it, you're the one that, so that's, that's the hard part.
Okay, any questions for Mike to answer? Who's the correspondent's question?
Correspondence from the Office of Commissioner regarding 2016 municipal zero emissions vehicle infrastructure rebate program, correspondence from New York State Urban Forestry Council regarding Arbor Bay Orient, letter from Co-Doc Officer Tateau regarding property management for Dragoon, Ryan Dragoon, letter from Co-Doc Officer Tateau regarding property management, Gail Berger, J.C.O. monthly report from May 2017, correspondence from Fermus to get a achievement for achievement for no claims, correspondence from Village Attorney Tom's remaining regarding case ready to face.
Any comments on the correspondent?
Yay, for no injuries.
Yes. I think our superintendent needs sleep.
We got that, and two days later, we had it out of it.
Sorry, we did that. Okay, any new business? Any kind of proposal, if you, Chairman, want to take?
Sure. We've been fortunate that we've been able to be involved in this longboat program through the National Museum for two years at low cost. Last winter, they contacted me and asked if we would be able to contribute anything to the program. They tried to build a boat or two a year, and we've been voted to out to us. I talked, the mayor and I have talked about this over a few months, but my suggestion for this year, and they would be quite happy if we could do this, is to contribute $1,000 to their program this year, and then following year, make a more substantial contribution to their program, which is really our program, and we are the only, we're the only ones in New York State that are participating, I think, so a real feather on our cap. It's quite well known now, maybe if you go traveling from all over, it comes through, shows off our village, and as Kim said, people are gathering in town, and they are down here. So, I think it would be, I think it's important for them to do this program. So, my recommendation this year is, is $1,000 to the National Museum. No, it's $1,000. I mean, they would be quite happy if you wanted them.
I thought, I thought, did you, with my notice from them, the email from them, that you had? Well, he's going to be quite happy if it's $1,000, but that's, I mean, that's what, I forwarded the email, did I, was that 15? I thought it was $1,000.
I think it's going to work well. I think the donation contribution should.
Well, let's say 15, that's fine, maybe that was the original amount, maybe I just lost track of it.
They also do the training. They can send someone over there. They offer the training to anyone else to go to the train, those are pups and the life jackets, everything that we need, they come over and do some work with us over here. We're driving again tomorrow over to, to bring them over, it's a two hour trip in the morning, so we're very excited about showing them, they're looking.
So, that's for 15, hundred.
Okay, I think that's the forum, the question, please.
I make a motion that we contribute $1,500 to the National Museum in support of the longboat program.
One second, we have a second. We haven't had, but.
Yes, doesn't matter, but we're going to take out a parks, which is A7110.4. What do we have assigned for that? On a budget, $7,000.
Diana, I just got a, I'm just asking for a clarification, because I can't remember when we started the program. Do villages and towns apply to be part of this program, and then you're chosen, or? I don't remember what the process was.
Well, they were looking for, three and a half years ago, I just was introduced to somebody who works for that program, and they were looking for someone along the lake in New York to participate, and no one, no one really was interested. Westport thought they might be, and there's another one down in that area, and I said, well, it's a champagne, we're, you know, we're on the river, and that has access to the lake, and they were just supportive of it, so, no, we didn't have to apply, but they're really happy with how it's going here.
So, they're happy to be coming now.
Yeah, and apparently there's some documentary that they did, and we're in it, I haven't seen it, but it highlighted the champagne program that's through the national parks, it's through the national parks, it's part of the areas. And Nick Woody dropped off their first boat, made reference to that film, he said, yeah, that film was really good, champagne was really good, and they found it, it's amazing. So, that's what happened.
Something, you have your hands on it, show it at the meeting house sometime.
Yeah.
I was just curious, I couldn't, I really could not remember. It just happened a while ago.
It's an organization that supplies some kids that don't deal with the regular S P C to go build a boat, and they get all the classes right there, of course, they build the boat, they do the math, they do the history, they do the recognition, whatever they need to do, as an alternate high school thing.
Or I had to?
You know, our support, I think, will go along with, in helping that program continue as well as allowing us to continue with the building process.
You can't do that when everyone else wants to. I'm just asking for how it's all the programs are doing, it's just amazing.
I think this is inexpensive for, we're helping them. Do you have a question?
I've got, yeah, I think, didn't we ask for this one's possible?
Yeah, it was like, thirty thousand, thirty something, I don't know. When they figure out material, when, when time.
So, we have a motion, we have a second, is there any further discussion?
Trusty Tromblin.
Aye.
Trusty Fettich.
Aye.
Trusty Tromblin.
Aye.
Trusty Barrett.
Aye.
Mayor Murray.
Aye. Need a resolution to send two people to a water, wastewater class July 12th in Plattsburg, need to send Woody and Robert for hours to water and wastewater, they get six hours.
Lot of glass, yeah.
Lot, six hours, the sum of $200, to dip and drain, and to get their hours back in, you know, back to focus here a little bit. You have a second?
Second.
This is July 12th, two of them, Mike?
There's going to be one on September, so, we only want to do, I want it to be September, we'll be two people there, and, you know, probably, I'm sure we'll probably, we're going to be a little bit weird, we're crossing the third gallery, so. But I thought the ten today, we'll be coming around a little, a couple of hours, so.
Swing through the discussion, you will call this.
Trusty Tromblin.
Aye.
Trusty Fettich.
Aye.
Trusty Tromblin.
Aye.
Trusty Barrett.
Aye.
Mayor Murray.
Aye. My final, my final item of your new business is, we have, Janet has worked very diligently, along with Mary and Juanita, to deal with the, to deal with the charging station in the village for electric vehicles. The grant process, the grant request has been put in, we've been notified that we're in the process, and we're coming close to the end, and the idea of getting this grant is, is, I'd like to say is pretty certain, and it's in the works, although we haven't had the official, the official notification yet, that this will, that we will be awarded this grant. We've got to, or we've got an email from Nancy Bernstein from Inca, who will be here Wednesday, to talk to us about this, and we want a question, but we have questions forward about this, about this grant. We're plucking a grant of $6,720, of which $830 will be in service. That will be, again, laying another layer on Mike's shoulders here, digging the trench, putting a cement pad in, running a wire for wire necessary. We've contacted a firm that supplies these stations, and we requested a quote months ago, and Janet called the representative on Friday, the quote he gave us was the same as it was six or seven months ago, and it, he said that he would work that out, this is a firm from California, and they send two people out here to program and to make sure that the hookup is direct. This is a, this is a class for the E V charging station of $5,899. I would like the board, if possible, I would like the board to approve that amount, so that when we receive this award, we can order this right away and get the process moving. The grant will pay for it, it's just that we need to, we need to set this process in motion, we get it upfront, get it moving forward. I am fairly confident that we will be awarded this grant, 100%, no, but fairly confident that we will get this grant, and it's just in the pipeline, it's paperwork, and we all know how slowly the state works on these things. With the Department of State, we still have tons of money out there for revitalization that we have not been able to first, that we will be eventually. So, what I'm asking the board is to, is to approve an amount, so that when the grant comes in, and we can get this process moving forward, that this money will be available, and the money will pay for the grant, obviously, pay for what we bring, put upfront, but this amount up to $5,899, so that this E V charging station becomes more reliable down in the village, down at the level.
So, is this the thing going in advance to get early?
Well, if, if that's, if that's the advice that we get from Nancy Bernstein, yes, the advice is under.
I can add that her, her most recent message was that one person told her that if the letter of agreement was a couple of days away from arriving here, and the second one said it was somewhere in the pipeline, but they didn't know exactly when it was coming. So, we're being a little cautious, because we don't know, we know it's coming, but we don't know when, we weren't sure about spending the money in advance or actually.
It doesn't matter.
Well, that's what we're thinking. So, we're, but that way, when it does come in, then we can place the order right then.
Yeah, but we need to, we need to spend money before we get reimbursed.
True.
Right.
You know, but we want to get the letter of agreement.
Yeah, it has to come from the village.
Yeah.
Actual payment has to come from the village.
I just want to see the letter of agreement.
You don't have to expend the money until you get the letter of agreement, you're just asking for the approval for it.
Until it's trying to come.
So, we can order it.
Right.
We get the, we get a regulatory letter, but we're not going to get the check right now. You have to fill out the paperwork, fill out the paperwork, descend back to the state.
Congratulations.
That's the, that's the key word, very, very.
Although the solar, the, the solar permit, um, since if we got very quickly from the same kind of office, so. It might be faster, at least faster.
We have countless two and four.
So once each station goes in, who pays for the electricity?
We do.
It would be so easy.
Really? Yeah, it's not very expensive. And again, it's, it's a draw to get it.
Where do you get that?
Well, it can be changed at some point, it can be changed at some point.
Wages is nicer than we pay out every month.
Yeah, and that's, that's our goal, because we thought that, they said it was not very expensive.
You're only paying it to me, right?
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah, it just, it does. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I would say yes. One tank gold. I know there's, uh, I don't, I don't know on that one, but they somehow have multiple drums depending on what you have for, uh, vehicles. Two different.
But it's a solar truck, it's not the fast rate, it's a solar.
Yeah, well, depending if I actually go out on the river.
It's gonna take probably two hours.
Oh, well, that's not bad.
It does, I'm willing to try.
Are you looking for a motion?
Are you?
I'll make a motion for the expenditure of five thousand eight hundred, up to five thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for the charging station, um, dependent, uh, or, um, to coincide with the arrival of the letter of agreement for the charging station.
Wait a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah.
Your local office.
Justin Trombley.
Aye.
Justin Garrett.
Aye.
Another fellow. Justin Trombley.
Aye.
Justin Fletcher.
Aye.
Mary. That was all.
Way to shake it off.
I wasn't paying attention. I wasn't either.
Okay, I follow this to you, one more item of your new business.
It's time to tell them.
We need to, uh, I think, as we are progressing to bring more people downtown, and one of the things we've had that we're very successful in the park is, uh, is the music in the park, and every time we wanted to have music, we had to go in and ask for a wagon to come in from the VFW. From the VFW. In consideration, we thought that this would be a good time as we are, as we're moving along to increase the traffic downtown, especially in the Villaroy Park and the like. But we look at a, uh, we look at a stand, a purchase stand that we can put the people on, where they can perform. A stage that affordable stage, uh, instead of having to work off the ground or get that, uh, get that wagon back and forth. Uh, with down roads. This would be, uh, it would be something that we would keep here in the village. It's weather resistant, we would dismantle it after every performance, we close up, we put on a cart. Uh, wheel the cart back behind the fence in the wastewater plant, on the left. Keep it safe, that's what we, we're, 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 uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, one. Is this something I'm asking the board to consider? Or is it worship?
Is it twelve by eight?
It's twelve by eight, because they aren't really looking at that size. So the side rails, the three side rails, uh, steps, three steps, and the trolley to be able to pull it off. And that's all included in that price.
Is it still two year?
No, it's, uh, fifty-two, fifty-two ninety. I spent several hours looking at these the past couple of days, we could really only find Stage Drop and, um, Stage Depot that had what we were, what we need, because we want outdoor monorail and indoor one. I, it would be big enough, it would be big enough for the music events, there is some interest in having some theater, like, you know, Shakespeare in the Park and, um, even some of the theater with children, but I still think it would be good.
It'd be, it'd be added on.
It could be added on too, but even, you can even add a canopy over the top of it. Yes, it can be added on.
This is twelve by eight for this price?
For outdoor.
Can we construct something cheaper? That's crazy.
Oh, but it'd be so heavy if you made five, five thousand.
If we constructed some, uh, you have to, I don't know, have to allow this thing to, is that what you're thinking?
If we're allowed to have.
Yeah, you can't, that would be permanent in the park.
It's expensive, but I, I just feel like it's investment in all of the things that are going on. I just, uh, think that, you know, people are excited to come to everything and it's great that we were loaning that trailer, but I had to wait down there every day for that to arrive and help them park it and I wonder if it was in the right location and.
What size of the trailer, is this close to the city town?
It was two.
What was it?
What was it like?
It was, it was the VFW float.
It was the VFW float.
VFW float, that's what they said down.
It was just, yeah, I didn't think of, was it that wide? Well, anyway, that's, yeah, maybe it was a little bigger, but it was long, it was long, it's longer than I needed.
It was on, we get a farm wagon, it was on rail, it was on, it was a lot, a wagon.
Uh, this would be off the ground, you can adjust the height, but most of it would be off the ground at least before.
You know, the thing when you, when you start looking at wagons and getting things like that, you're also looking at probably somebody donating and, and maintenance.
Well, I mean, probably it's gonna be both, or maybe initially you get it.
Oh, I was just thinking the maintenance of, of keeping something.
Basically a trailer, we drop like, you know, it's leveling legs.
Well, and I can just ask you to think about it, but, uh, that's, it's fine, because I'll do some more research if you want. Uh, I think we really, really need something if we're gonna step up this a little bit. I can do a GoFundMe page if you want me to try that first.
Yeah, it is, it's good. I think, I think it's, I do, it's nice, I need to do it.
And then I can start with public, with the public, I could do a GoFundMe page that I could do with the playground, this is where we go. I mean, it's up, you know, it's up to you.
It's okay, it's quick, so.
Well, yeah, let me see if I can find any grants, I know, it's just to put that kind of money. I know what you're trying to do and I think it's great, but, you know, we're doing a lot with the whole redo of the downtown and, uh.
We're both looking for grants, we can put it up on there.
Please grant, I mean, I can, I can, I could try a GoFundMe page and see what happens. Well, I, I, maybe I can't do it, I think that's really. Raise the money for that other swing, if there, if that was on the. Oh, I think so too.
I think that would be a lot. I think I forget about it, I think this.
Yeah, I think we need to be involved, I think we need to, of course, we need to, pull some of the. That kind of stuff's plenty, though.
I don't know.
Well, if you do that, then it's gone.
You said, where would that come out?
One more fact.
We just use part of it. Part from the public.
You could do either, um, the parts or, or.
I'm, I'm, personally, I'm pretty big.
July sixteenth, Village Fest.
July sixteenth.
Janet. That was Village Fest.
Yeah. I mean, that's another time it should be used to.
Yeah.
I'm going to try to write a grant for music, for concerts this summer, for next summer. The sixteenth, there's one of them. Yeah, the sixteenth, there's one August tournament, I'm sorry, Lady Jumper. The Village Fest would use it and then the day after the Village Fest, there's another one, so. I think there's another one.
How big is that? How much would it?
Twelve by eight.
You may want to think about, uh, depending what it is, you may want to think about getting a trailer, a trailer, something you can use for multiple, you probably wouldn't spend that.
Yeah, if you give them that size, it's supposed to, I mean.
But you go, multiple use, we, it's just a thought.
But you couldn't add on to it if you like.
Yeah, this has a railing, it's steps, it's hard to move it. I think it's something that I'd do, so. I'd go see if I could five thousand on a trailer. You really are. I know I'd love one.
Well, think about it and, uh, I'll talk to the community.
You have to be, I mean, you do, you're GoFundMe thing and see what shakes out for July.
Yeah, I can try it. I'll have to see somebody do it. I don't think I can, I don't.
Yeah, maybe you can.
Yeah, I can get somebody to do it. I, I, I know a couple of people that will have it.
All right, so this is the direction I'm gonna take here. All right, uh, old business, Mike, you wanna deal with the floaters here?
Yeah, I would spend a little. I, uh, I got a quote on, uh, trying to get three quotes for new loaders, um, which I kinda did get three quotes and then, um, well, I've got, I've got two quotes here. The third quote, the company told me when I send me one, they can look at ours, see what it's worth, and then they called me and said, well, we're always more money than the backup, I don't want to be on it, I don't want to be a support.
Is that quote number three?
Yeah, um, so I do have two quotes here for new loader, one from, uh, John Nortrak, John Deere, and the other one is, uh, for Case from Beauregard Equipment.
All right, let's go right over to the rest of the, over to the last one.
Well, our loader right now, um, needs tires, which is four thousand dollars. The rims are pretty rotted, that's six thousand dollars. I checked with, uh, Yolon over at the paint shop and see what it costs to have ours loader painted. He told me between ten and twelve thousand to send us the payment.
What's the point of having it?
Right, that's what I'm just saying, keeping it from rotting anymore than what it is. What, what we have right now, as far as what we have right now, when we, when we, between ten and twelve thousand, he told me, we just got the same last year. And you still have a, you still have a used machine. Um, when we bought that machine, we paid ninety-eight thousand thirty-eight dollars, you know, back in all nine. It's a few years old, um, trade-in. If you were a new machine, they're gonna give sixty thousand for it. So it's cost us forty-seven hundred fifty-four dollars a year since we loaned it, the machine we had now.
Are we, so this is apples to apples on both items?
Yes, yes it is. Mostly it is. The, the biggest one is the one that's actually less money. They're both, uh, five-year, three-thousand-hour warranty.
Yeah.
The case also gives you three-year all-maintenance. You do it right here, oil, filters, everything is done, is included.
The Pro Care?
Yes. If that comes in, they include that with it. Um, and it's funny, they, they offered, you can see they offered us sixty thousand for ours and the company that sold us, the John Deere, offers fifty-seven dollars. So these are apples-to-apples machines and you can see there's quite a, quite a difference between the two of them. The third quote I had gotten was originally the Ginyu Price was, uh, Caterpillar's, yeah. And, but they wouldn't come back and they didn't have, most of the stuff now, the machines are built, it comes with them, backup cameras, a lot of stuff that they used to have, standard equipment, even like, um, Caterpillar, I talked to them, I asked him, um, there's something I didn't want that is gonna cost more not to have it than it was to have it because it's a stop of all of everybody wants because of the trade-in.
Right.
Biggest thing with us is these are state contract pricing, so when we trade, we get full trade-in, but we face that state contract pricing, so it's more of a benefit to us. We're trading it for four or five years, it doesn't cost nearly as much as it does as an individual or a contractor from the outside. Biggest thing here is under warranty. Um, when you get into, bring in a pit shop, it's expensive. We, we did have a warranty on our Baccal, which is a period of a minute, it's covered. Um, so we're, we're gonna have to do some, ours, we're ready to start the end noise too. It doesn't seem to have power it used to have and I don't know if that's completely plugged up, particulates from island time, we do a lot of island wear. So I do have, uh, two quotes I have here are comparable machines. Uh, you can see there is quite a difference between the, between the two of them.
About twenty thousand two hundred and thirty-three seventy.
Yeah.
I think the, I think the benefit here is we're gonna take a benefit against this thing, but I think the benefit is you get in with this for all of it, but we keep the machine for four or five years, it's under warranty, it's not gonna process a whole lot of money. And then when we create it back in, we got a machine that will give us a much better trade-in, obviously.
Right.
And we, uh, you know, this just continues to circle.
Yeah, the other thing with this, the other thing with this is we didn't have our other one that will be with this one. A lot of them are standard now, it also comes with a fork set, fork with forks. So we got a, we have the converter right now, but a lot of times it's not heavy enough because we can move stuff for the pallets or all the paper bricks. We couldn't lift them, they were a little too light hand. So this does come with a five-foot fork set.
Yeah, so you could build a stage and use a forklift to move it.
Yeah. If you're going that route.
First we have to buy the.
For sixty-seven thousand more hours.
You could, um, but that's one thing we didn't have on our, on our other one, it had a quick change coupler and we only had the bucket for it, so we never took it off and we didn't have.
As I said, we're gonna, sixty-seven thousand dollars, it's a significant amount of money, but for eight, two more years, for three more years.
It's gonna be eighty-seven thousand.
Does it even use sixty-five?
It will give you sixty-four.
Are you looking for a motion, Greg? Yeah, before we have any more discussion, I make a motion that we accept the quote of sixty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, um, from Beauregard's equipment for the twenty-seventeen case loader.
Have a second?
Sure.
Now, discussion.
So how, how do we get around not having a third quote though? I mean, with this kind of money?
It's state contract pricing at Beauregard. I do have a third quote right here of one hundred and forty thousand from Case, but I asked them to send me another quote because there was some stuff that wasn't on their machine that was on these and they refused to do it because they said they'd never get state contract bids because there's always more money. They refused to send me a quote of Caterpillar.
So is that how we can get around the three quotes?
I have, I do, I do have a quote, it was a hundred and forty thousand, he told me it's what, what he, he estimated as, and I do have that, I mean, uh. But these are both state contract pricing. This one says pricing for New York State OGS approved contract number and this one is state contract pricing too. And, and you're right, that's how some of the municipalities.
Yeah, Cap, Cap, they assume what, they can buy direct, they don't have to go through a, a bid or through a. Right, so they buy the brand they want, period.
It's state contract.
Right.
Well, this, this looks like we're getting a much, much better customer service.
Yes. For one year.
Usually, usually, usually John Deere is one-year warranty, but Case comes with three-year, so when they did this, they added the three-year to make it comparable. On the John Deere, you put a rate of price and I'm sure that's something that helped, but, I don't, yeah, but you, being apples to apples, you use the three-year hold.
And they give us a contract with us to guarantee you the three-year warranty and that they come to you to serve us?
Yeah, I got the sheet right near it, it came with it, straight on here, actually, at the bottom.
Yeah, it's a tight name.
They didn't offer that.
What's that?
That was an offer on the back of the.
Did we have extended warranty?
We had, we had extended warranty, then we bought a, a longer warranty.
And now the in-house.
Service. I don't know if that's something newly just started or if it's just on loaders. I don't know, but that's right in the, I wouldn't be surprised if the new loaders are that way too, the new, uh, Baccals, but they, they did give me the manual, um, the pamphlets with it that shows three years. I wanted to verify today because I asked some of the other ones about it and they said, yeah, we do that, but there's a, we gotta pay a five-hundred-dollar duck bill. And I asked them, I said, no duck bill, we take care of the oil, we take care of, well, we just did the service on the, on our Baccal, has a thousand hours and I just spent, well, I spent like something nine hundred bucks or fifty-five hours of oil, filters, change of hydraulics, change of motor oil, change of transmission. It adds up, so.
And a little of the service, they do the hydraulics as well?
Whatever, thousand-hour service, that's what I just, up to three thousand hour, three-year. So depending how many hours you put on it, we haven't had the Baccal for years, we've got a thousand hours on it now, so up to that, those hours, they'll do that service. So this one here, it would be a five-year, three-thousand-hour warranty. The first three-year, three-thousand-hour, they, they provide the service, they do it right here, they throw the service truck, they'll service it. So that is a, uh, added that the other ones don't do. You know, I asked them, I, oh yeah, we do that, but it's gonna cost you, you just keep, you know, they add it in to, to the costs, yeah. So we do, we can do that, sure. We just raise the number a little.
All right, um, we need to do like a general fund.
We have a reserve for it too. We have a reserve for equipment, but we also, we can take a set of fund balance.
We can do it. Peter Ward.
Uh, do you want to keep the reserve for the side one?
I'd like to keep the reserve. Just pass, uh, the fund balance. Is there any further question?
Any question?
Your call first.
Uh, Trusty Tromblin.
Aye.
Trusty Thatcher.
Aye.
Trusty Tromblin.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Murray.
Aye. Is there anything else coming for the board?
I would like to thank the Girl Scouts for coming and doing that presentation, junior Girl Scouts. Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your efforts with the Island Project. I, I know, I was hoping to wrap it up because they look like they're getting tired.
Tired, bored, whatever.
We'll come back. Thank you very much.